Roll call.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistock.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rowe.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Citizens comments?
We have none.
Approval of minutes?
It is recommended that the Board approve the minutes of June 27, 2018 special meeting, and the June 28, 2018 voting meeting, and July 12, 2018 discussion voting meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, both.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, seven. Accounts, fund accounting check summary?
It is recommended the Board approve the July 2018 fund accounting check summary.
Motion?
Summary.
Second?
Action.
Roll call.
Mr. Beistock.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
General Fund Expenditures and Revenue Report.
It is recommended the Board approve the July 2018 general fund expenditures and revenue report.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Reporter of the Treasurer to the Board of Education.
It is recommended the Board approve the June 2018 Treasurers Report.
Motion.
Make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Beistock.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Reporter of the Treasurer to the Board of Education.
It is recommended the Board approve the June 2018 Treasurers Report.
Motion.
Make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Mrs. Smith. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mr. Frye.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Beistock.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Audit report?
I would like to thank and welcome Mr. Mark Turnley, our district auditor, and I'm going to ask him if he would present the completed audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Board members, thank you for having me here this evening. I've put some correspondence in front of you, three items, a bound copy, an official bound copy, of the 16-17 year audit report, along with two other pieces of correspondence stated for this evening, one of which I'll have you turn your attention to as I go throughout my presentation. Lot of information in that thick report to digest, so obviously I'll go through it as quickly as I can, and be brief, and try to touch on the highlights. With regard to the thick bound audit report, a couple of items I wanted to mention to the Board is, probably the most important thing we do after we have assessed all of your records for the year, is issue our independent auditor's opinion, which is in the very beginning of that audit report, on Roman numeral pages one through three. And what we've issued for the school district is what is known as an unmodified opinion. And an unmodified opinion in our business basically means that the financial information contained within the body of the audit report has been presented in conformity with the rules and regulations of our profession, with no departures. So in layman's terms, that's the type of opinion you want, that's the type of opinion you want PDE to see when the report is submitted to them. Subsequent to that, those pages, on Roman numeral pages four through 14, is a section known as the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And I always encourage my Board members, you have a lot of information to read, I know I was a Board member myself in my home district, so I know all of the information you have to leave through on a continuing basis. That section probably will give you the shortest and quickest way to get a good feel, a synopsis for how the district did, not only for the 16-17 year, but show comparative information, 16-17 versus 15-16. So I encourage you, if you don't get a chance to read the whole report again, to kind of concentrate on that particular section, to get a good feel. Following that section of the report are the actual financial statements, just a couple of things I wanted to point out on there. If you look at page one, which is Exhibit A, it's the statement of net position. And what this statement is, it's a consolidation of the activities of all the funds here at the school district. This particular financial statement requires you to show not only the short-term view of the school district, which is what most Board members are comfortable with, and that's how you do your general fund budgeting on an annual basis. This adds in your long-term debt, and your long-term fixed assets, things of that nature, to look at it from a private business perspective, how do you look? And if you look down at the bottom, you're going to see a line that says total net position, you're going to see brackets where it says a deficit. And if you look all the way to the right, you're going to see a deficit figure of almost $33 million. That's a similar story for all of my school districts, and we do a number of them. And the main culprit there is, if you were to look up from that number, under the subsection called non-current liabilities, shortly up after that, the second line down, you're going to see a figure that says net pension liability, and you're going to see a huge number there, $44 million. Those of you that have been on the Board for a while, back in 2015, the rules and regulations of our profession required school districts to now show their proportionate share of Peasars, the pension, the pooled pension at the state level, show your share of their overall liability. So if you can imagine this is your share, you can imagine what the total liability is for the Peasars plan. So luckily, you don't have to write a check to Peasars tomorrow for $44 million, but from an accounting perspective, you must show this amount. So you see the effect that that $44 million has in throwing you in a deficit position for this statement. And I only wanted to call that to your attention, so at some point, you happen to be looking at this particular page of this audit report, and look at the bottom, and see the words deficit, that always sends off red flags, but I wanted to explain that to allay your fears to some degree, that it's more of an accounting necessity than it is a true picture of what you would act, where you'd actually be at the end of June of 2017. Just to turn your attention quickly to how your major fund did for the year, your general fund, if you'd be kind enough to turn to page five in that report, which is Exhibit E, if you look at the first column, in particular, the four lines at the bottom, in that first column, the fourth line from the bottom, you're going to see where it says net change in fund balance. And you're going to see, for the year, your expenditures exceeded your revenues by $1,390,000, almost 1.4 million. And in my short synopsis that I'll talk about in a minute, I give you some of the reasons for that, and I know Mr. Marnell has during the course of the year, some of the areas where expenditures were made in excess of what was anticipated for in the original budget process. But you could see that your fund balance now, for the general fund, ended the year at $4,932,000, and that's your total fund balance. For the sake of that presentation this evening, I wanted to share with the Board, the other piece, one of the other pieces of correspondence that you have in front of you, and it's a two-sided copy that has seven pages to it, but if you'd look at the first page, you can identify this particular piece of correspondence, because the first bullet point says general fund balance analysis. If everybody sees that particular piece of correspondence, I wanted to share with the Board, what your total fund balance in your general fund has looked like for the past five fiscal years, ending with what I just mentioned to you, the $4,932,000. And I'm sure there are various reasons for the increase or decrease. That's in the, that's not in the thick audit report, that's in a separate piece of correspondence. And it's, I think it's your second page, there it is, yes. You can see the five-year history of the general fund balance by itself. Probably a more important figure, though, if you'd be kind enough to turn to the second page, is a five-year history of a portion of that fund balance, and the portion of the fund balance is known as the unassigned fund balance portion. As you know as a Board, your overall fund balance, you have segregated a couple chunks of that money as assigned for particular purposes, or committed for particular purposes. And so what this is, is the unassigned portion that can be used for general operations. And the reason why this particular number is important is because the state gauges your ability to raise taxes, and what you're, in comparison to what their common law is at PDE. So just looking at your fund balance, unassigned portion at June 30, 2017, you see a figure on that second page of $3,709,000. That happens to be 11.5% of your budget for the year that just ended, 17-18. Well, what is the importance of that 11.5%? Well, you as a Board, in your fund balance policy, have said that, at a minimum, you would like your fund balance to be 5% of your budget, and at a maximum, you would like it to be 8%. And anything above 8%, you would consider using for various expenditures as deemed necessary by the Board. So you can see, from your own policy, you're over what you would hope your capped fund balance would be. But the reason your fund balance policy stops at 8%, or at least suggests stops at 8%, is because there's a Commonwealth law back in 2003 that said, for your particular-sized school district, that in order to raise taxes, real estate taxes, above and beyond the state index on an annual basis, you must adopt a budget where your unassigned fund balance, this number we're talking about, is at or below 8%. So your school board policy lines up with that, but currently, you're at 11.5, just for the sake of conversation for the Board. There's an outside organization that does studies of school district fund balance. What's the right fund balance, because that's the question that a lot of people ask? Well, there's an organization called the Government Finance Officers Association, and I put in a paragraph, as you can read for yourself on that second page, that their suggestion, after looking at a number of school districts, is that your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance, should be in the range of about two months' worth of average expenditures for any particular school district. I did the calculation for you on this particular page, and when you look at it, in your particular case, two months' average expenditures are a little over $5 million. The problem with that is, even though that's the prudent recommended level by this organization, they didn't take into effect that the state says, hey, you better cut off at 8%, or else you're not going to be able to raise the real estate taxes. So really, this organization, they're looking at it more from a business perspective, and did not take into effect the fact that the law that tries to cap a school district's fund balance. But I wanted to see you what this outside organization projects as prudent fund balance based on your budget, and where you stand in relation to that. And down below that, I just talked about what I had previously talked about, you, not in your assigned fund balance, unassigned, but your other areas of fund balance, you have money set away, set aside for the guaranteed energy savings projects, and some early retirement incentives. So those are in your assigned and committed categories, but up until now, we've just been talking about unassigned. On the top of page three, I talk about budget versus actual results, and again, I, all I'm doing is providing you a short synopsis of some of the areas where there are excesses revenue, over/under budget, and expenditures over/under budget. In the thick audit report, if you want to see a line-by-line look at how you did budget versus actual for the year, the revenues are detailed in that thick bound audit report on page 41, and the expenditures on pages 42 through 45. So this short synopsis letter that I'm presenting to you is just calling your attention to the particular pages to review when you get a chance in that thicker audit report, if you want to see a greater level of detail on how you did your budget versus actual. Down below that, I show the overall operating results in major categories. And all this information, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, is in that thicker audit report. I tried to pull, as I mentioned before, some of the highlighted numbers and put it here so you can quickly see that. I just show you how you did in various categories. For the food service operations, I just wanted to call to your attention that, when you see the second line down, under food service operations on page three, you'll see a change in net position, which is a fancy name for profit or loss for the year. If you look at the June 30, 17, you will see a loss for the year of about $66,655. And there's a financial statement in that thick audit report that shares that same number. I didn't want to leave you with just that number for you, for you to look at, without explaining some issues in deriving that number. In that number, what caused that loss are two items that, in our profession, we call non-cash items. In other words, it wasn't a vendor where you paid money to, it was an accounting entry that was necessary to be made. And one of his $40,000 for what's called depreciation expense, it's an accounting entry that we have to make, and another was $27,000 for pension expense, additional pension expense to be had to show, so that you'd be in compliance with Peasars rules and regulations. If you were to back those two amounts up, because it's not anything that you paid again, you would see that your operations of the cafeteria fund, actually, for the 16-17 year, were slightly to the good, a small profit, almost a break-even. So it's important to take that into consideration, and I've spelled that out in this summary report for you. If you're looking at your cafeteria fund for the operation, for how you did for the year, don't look at that net loss and immediately judge that there could be certain things that are wrong. Take into consideration these two items when you're assessing how you did for the year. So just something I wanted to call to your attention. Jumping back to the thicker report for a few moments, in the body of the audit report, there's a number of pages that are dedicated to the notes to the financial statements, which helps Board members and any third-party reader of the financial statements to get a greater level of detail with regard to the balances that are on your balance sheet or in your audit report, just provides more information on long-term debt, long-term assets, things of that nature, so it's a lot of information there. In the back of the audit report are the schedules that I referred you to earlier, that talk about budget versus actual. In the very back of the audit report, the last so many pages, six or seven pages, because you receive and expend over $750,000 in federal funds on an annual basis, we must not only do a financial audit, but we have to do what is known as a compliance audit. And every year, you choose a different federal program to do that compliance audit on. And for this particular year that we audited, we did the cafeteria fund operations, in particular, just their compliance with the rules and regulations of that particular program. And from a material standpoint, what you'll note in the audit report, there's a page in the back that says schedule of findings and questioned cost related to that program, and you will see that there are none. We had no issues with regard to the cafeteria fund on the area of compliance. And that's one of the pages that, when PDE gets a copy of the audit report, they go to quickly to see if the district has to come forth with any corrective action plan, any issues related to whatever particular program we tested for compliance. So again, as I like to say in layman's terms, that's a good thing, that's what you want to have on your federal programs. With regard to the thicker audit report, that's basically what I wanted to go over, this other piece of correspondence that we were just talking about, we have other recommendations on the last couple pages of that report, that I encourage the Board to read at their leisure. In addition, I gave you another piece of correspondence, I believe it's a two-page, or a three-page, I'm sorry, piece of correspondence stated for this evening, you'll see the first bullet point on that piece of correspondence, says qualitative aspects of accounting practices. I won't go through there in detail, I'll, in summary, simply say to you that, about three or four years ago, our profession decided that, at the conclusion of the audit engagement, we must share directly with the Board members whether we had any issues or problems in dealing with management, in obtaining the information, in being able to perform our audit, did we have to go outside for any additional help, for any contentious issues, things of that nature, did we have to use any significant estimates instead of actual numbers, just items that are peripheral to the actual audit itself. And as you read through that letter, it's fairly vanilla, it's the same type letter I issued to most of my school districts, basically saying that we had no issues, obviously, in dealing with management, very cooperative, we're able to obtain the information we needed to do the job in an efficient manner, and that's important for the Board to know. I think, other than that, everyone, those are the highlights, a lot of information, it's tough to go through in such a short period of time. But if you have any questions at this point, I'll be more than happy to answer them if I can. But if you get a chance to go through it all, and you have questions, you can obviously either reach me directly through Mr. Marnell's office, or you can contact my office, always feel free to contact my office directly with any direct questions or additional explanation you might need on any of these items.
Are there any questions for Mr. Turnley? Well, Mr. Turnley, I want to thank you once again for joining us this evening.
Thank you, thank you, Board Member.
Okay, I have attached several documents to my report, I'll briefly go through them very quickly, one of which is the 2019 Administration of the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which is also known as the NAEP test. Southmorehead School District was chosen by the state this year to be a part of that process, and they will be testing our 12th grade math, reading, and science, and the state will come in and handle all that, those testings. I have also included a copy of the Act 55 training requirements for Board members. It has now come out that newly-elected Board members must undergo four hours of Board training through PSBA, and any re-elected or re-appointed Board member must also undergo two hours of advanced training. And I'm going to throw myself out there and volunteer myself, and I know that several of my administrative team has also volunteered. If you would like to do that before Board meeting, we can all log on to PSBA, and we will gladly sit down and go through the training with you. I believe in, you know, educational understanding, so it's only going to benefit us if we also understand. So, please, pardon?
When's that have to be done by?
Tomorrow.
Very soon.
So you stay over.
Very soon. Sorry to break the bad news.
Can you set something up for the, before the next meeting, or?
We can. Yeah, we, if, if we would like to before, well, the next meeting would be next Thursday, but if you would like to start in September, we can possibly...
Okay.
Look at the September schedule and get together, and, like I said, members of my administrative team have also volunteered to be a part of that, so.
Sounds good.
I have also included a copy of the Act 39 requirements for testing of school drinking water. I know that that had been done in the past, and I shared the results, once again, with the Board, and I'm going to post those and make that public, so that everyone understands the results of the test. We came back well, well below the limits of the acceptable limits, so we've done well. And I've also included a second quarter report of the 2018 combustible gas monitoring, and there was no findings there, so. Once again, in an effort to be transparent and make sure that everyone is aware of what's going on, including those reports. I'm also going to be, I'm currently evaluating some of the procedures that we do, and some of the processes that we, that we are currently following in this district, and I'm going to, down the line, I'm going to ask the Board maybe to entertain a discussion as to how we operate the concession stand, with some of the changes that have occurred through the budget. Maybe we could bring a little deeper involvement with the booster organizations, so that we could help fund some of them, and I know that they're going to be putting money into, you know, pay-to-play, or whatever, so maybe, maybe down the line, we can have a discussion of how, how we might be able to modify that, and what it would look like. We were notified about the performance contract instruction period report view, which is basically from Johnson Controls, which is the guaranteed energy savings. Mr. Marnell and I, we would like to, we have a representative that is requesting to come in and review those findings with us. I would ask if possibly to, several of the Board members would like to join us and be a part of that process. Please reach out to either Mr. Marnell or myself, and we will also send out a late, Jim, we can probably send out a little later on, a tentative date for when they are going to come in and meet with us. They wanted to meet like first, or second day of school, which is just not feasible for us starting school, so we're going to look at possibly a later date, and then we will send you notification on when we can do that. But I'd ask if several Board members would consider being a part of that process.
You'll let us know ahead of time?
Yes, ma'am.
So we can adjust our, you know, make sure we can come?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as we can get a tentative date, we will send it out immediately.
Send it out, okay, good.
I have a high school teacher, we have issued an FMLA that had been granted to return on June 3. She's requesting to come back earlier, so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we have a teacher that was granted FMLA, but she's going to come back a little earlier than expected. Yeah, I'm sorry, it was January 3, and she's looking to come back, I believe, December 2. I have been working with principals to get the schools up and ready, so two weeks away, we're about ready to get back into the swing of things. If possible, if we, if it's approved this evening, I would like to work with the Director of Informational Services, I would like to really work on updating our website and our Twitter account to disseminate information to the community and to our public, so if that's approved, I would like to really get that moving and start releasing information. And I have been working extensively with Mr. Patonic on attempting to facilitate the sale of the Russdale School Building, and we'll discuss that a little later on. That is the end of my report.
Thank you. Citizens support?
I don't have anything for public discussion, but would have for executive session.
Nothing under old business, new business, St. Vincent Prevention Projects.
It is recommended that the Board approve the Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol Commission School-Based Prevention Service at the annual contribution of $1,020, and we contribute every year to them.
We're not the right people, right? You are?
Make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second.
Sir.
Mr. Beistock. Discussion?
Vince, what do we get for that donation?
That, we have counselors come into our schools, that will work with students at risk, at risk, so they, they, they reach out, and they, we've had a large number of students in the past that have received services through the organization.
You say that was the $1,000 annual?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's not the same thing as the one that's $25,000.
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistock?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Bella Font Monarch School.
Before I read the recommendation, I have asked Mr. Clara and Mr. Haichu, we're going to be looking into this situation a lot deeper. Right now, I'm going to recommend that the Board approve the agreement with Bella Ford Jewish Children's Bureau Education Program, doing a business as a Monarch School for the 2018-2019 school year at a tuition cost of $86,125,000, and that is for that student that we have enrolled in that school.
Motion.
What is that all for? Is that, is that something we have figured into the budget?
Yeah. Jim, I do believe that's...
It is, and it has been pledged for several years. How much is it?
$86,125.
$86,000.
$86,125.
What is, what do you know what that program is?
Mr. Haichu or Mr. Clara, can you possibly lend some additional support on that?
That particular school and program provides highly specialized programming for students with autism spectrum disorders who have needs that go well beyond what schools are able to meet within their general education programs. I'm not sure... I'm not sure how much I can go into specifics of, of the nature of the student's needs in a public session. This, the student has attended this program historically for a number of years now, so this is not a new budget or expenditure item. I can say that right now there are circumstances where school districts have students in residential placements who attend such specialized programming for a day school, but the cost of transportation, coupled with the cost of the tuition of the program, would exceed the cost that's presented to you for this particular student.
Is this a budgetary thing for this to be going on, or just a new program?
It's not a new program. This student has attended this same program for the past five years, I believe.
Mr. Beistall, may I just add, I do believe that the last couple, even when we were discussing the budget, that was one of the topics of concern, this, this tuition cost. And I, and I do believe that we really need to look at how we're going to proceed in the future with this. And I, and I know that Mr. Clara and Mr. Haichu are going to be assisting me in, in trying to find an alternative if there is one.
Over the past two years that I've been employed here, upon my arrival, I was tasked with reviewing this particular case to look at whether or not there were more cost-efficient ways to meet the student's needs and provide programming, and we were not able to identify any. The current program is the one that meets the student's needs, obviously with whom the student and the family have a degree of comfort, having gone there for the number of years, and quite honestly, there aren't any other programs in our region or in our direct area that provide the level of support in the way of a residential treatment facility that's on-site of the school.
What is it that this facility does that can't be found in Pennsylvania anymore?
Well, it's not that it can't be found in Pennsylvania, it's the fact that the facility has both the residential treatment program on-site as the school. There are residential treatment programs, or pardon me, there are day school programs that can meet the student's needs, but they typically are placed in a residential placement that's not on-site of the campus of the school. So then there's the additional cost of the transportation involved as well.
And we have looked into insurance paying for this?
The school district's responsible for the academic component of the instruction, and that's what we pay. We do not pay for the residential costs associated with the student's program. What we don't have in this particular student's case is a cost of transportation associated with it.
So it's $86,000 plus transportation?
No.
It's just tuition.
Just tuition.
Tuition pays for special education and related services provided to students for 195 days.
So what's our, what's our breaking point? What's our threshold? We've got four or five days to catch up. Are we able to draw the line?
How many students is it?
It's one.
How many students?
Just one.
Two.
Not one.
This is just one student.
But we have another one out of state, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
And are we going to talk about that one also?
Not, not, we have not, we have not gotten any information about that yet.
That student was placed in that placement outside of the school district's input. That was done through medical necessity and a combination of that and court orders. The school district does not have the opportunity to approve or not approve the placement of the other student. Again, that's something that I could probably speak to you more in-depth in executive session.
We are, we are required to provide services.
You say we're required?
Yes.
So we don't want to go over there, right?
Any other questions for Mr. Haichu? Thank you, Mr. Haichu.
Thank you, Mr. Haichu.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Where were we?
Oh, Bella Ford.
Did we?
Oh, subject.
Mr. Polakowski, Mr. Beistall, roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
No.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
No.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, six to three, yes.
We're tableing the Roughdale until the end of the meeting, correct? We're going to table the Roughdale Elementary Building until the end of the meeting, and Western PA School for the Blind.
We, I would ask if we can table that to the next meeting. We've found some additional information today that we might be able to either share cost of transportation, but we're, we're exploring other ways that we might be able to reduce the cost there. And I, I would ask if we can table that until we explore those options further.
Make a motion that we recess for personnel?
So move.
I thought we were doing that after executive session. Weren't we doing that after executive session?
Well, no, I, I mean, I'm sorry, you're doing one executive session or two?
One.
Okay, then, for executive session, I would have tax litigation to discuss also, which would be the tax appeal that you're dealing with. RH BND, tax map number 47070076, and matters concerning litigation or complaints which could be matters identifiable.
Thank you. Did we get a motion taken?
No, Mrs. Rhodes made a motion.
I made a motion.
Second? Mrs. Smith? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, Director of We are going to add one to new business, air quality testing of the Roughdale School.
It is recommended the board authorize the administration to have the Roughdale School tested for air quality through PSI.
Motion?
So be it.
Mr. Beistall, second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, all members in favor.
Personnel, Director of Informational Services.
It is recommended the board approve Jenna Hickson as the Director of Informational Services for the district at a supplemental salary of $768, which is divided by number of additions, with four being the maximum.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Carson, roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
School Safety and Security Resolution for Middle Elementary School Principal. I just did it, I changed, I
You're asking for a motion, or?
What?
Are you asking for a motion, or?
No.
It is recommended the board approve the appointment of Charles, Charlie Swink as the School Safety and Security Coordinator as per Act 44 of 2018, signed into law June 22, 2018, and must be appointed no later than August 31, 2018, for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Benz, roll calls?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Resolution for Middle Elementary School Principal.
It is recommended the board approve a resolution which authorized administrative alignment at the May 17, 2018 voting meeting in appointing Tracy Kuhar principal of the middle school and elementary school at a salary of $94,000 as per the Act 93 agreement effective July 1, 2018.
Mr. Benz? Mr. Carson? Roll call?
Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
School Safety and Security Coordinator? School dentist.
It is recommended the board approve Dr. Jennifer Swabula-Gill as the School Dentist for the 2018-2019 school year at a fee of $1 per exam.
Motion? Mr. Beistall, roll call, please.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Paraprofessional?
It is recommended the board recall from furlough status Melinda Stimmel as a paraprofessional at the primary center at a salary of $15,876.3 with benefits.
Motion? Mr. Carson, second?
Second.
Mr. Polakowski, roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Final Teacher Furlough Resolution.
Be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the decision of the board as a committee of the whole, and that the adjudication in the matter of the above matter be and hereby is ratified in all respects to the same extent as set forth therein as the action of the Board of School Directors of the South Warren School District, and that therefore Marie Misery is suspended, furloughed from her position as a Spanish teacher as the final decision of the school board and the administration is directed to take all actions consistent herewith, and the secretary is to send copies of the adjudication in this resolution to the affected employee by certified mail. Nothing herein shall prejudice the rights of the employee to recall or, to recall or eligibility for a position for which she is certified. To be considered available, Marie Misery must annually report to the governing body, board, in writing her current address and her intent to accept the same or similar position when offered.
Motion, please?
Make that motion.
Second? Mrs. Smith, roll call?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
School Physician?
The board is asked to approve the continuation of Exella as the district's school physician. This agreement renews yearly unless either party chooses not to continue.
Motion?
So move.
Mr. Fry? Sackler? Mr. Beistall, roll call?
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Assistant Voice Soccer Coach.
It is recommended the board accept the resignation of Brandon Gally as an assistant boy soccer coach and authorize the administration to close and advertise the position.
Motion? Mr. Beistall, second?
Sackler.
Mrs. Smith, roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Boys Assistant Soccer Coach Volunteer.
It is recommended that the board approve Alex Leonard as a Boys Assistant Soccer Coach Volunteer.
So move. Second? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Middle School Girl Soccer Coach.
It is recommended the board approve Chris Hickson as the Middle School Girls Soccer Coach at a supplemental salary of $2,914 for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion?
Make that motion.
Mr. Polakowski, second?
Second.
Mr. Carson, roll call?
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine aye.
Girls Assistant High School Soccer Coach.
It is recommended the board approve Holly Shipley as the Girls High School Assistant Soccer Coach at a supplemental salary of $3,630 for the 2018-2019 school year.
So move. Second?
Second.
Mr. Fry, roll call, please.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?[1654.24] Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine yes.
Head Varsity Wrestling Coach.
It is recommended the board approve Dan Boring as the head varsity wrestling coach at a supplemental salary of $6,093 for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion and we table this to find out how many coaches you're just going to keep.
I couldn't hear what he said. He wants to table what? Tell him he has a little more information. Okay, he needs a second for motion to table.
Tell you what?
You need a second. Do we have a second on Mr. Beistall's motion to table?
It failed.
Roll call. Okay, return to the main motion. The main motion of Mr. Boring as the head varsity wrestling coach. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
Didn't we have a motion? Maybe we didn't. Maybe we did.
No, Mr. Beistall made, Clay made.
I'll make the motion.
You'll make the motion. Mrs. Smith made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fry? Roll call, please.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
No.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight yes, one no.
Volunteer Middle School Assistant Football Coach.
It is recommended the board approve Todd Bunner, Dan Boring, and Mike Tax as volunteer middle school assistant football coaches for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Carson, second? Mrs. Smith? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine yes.
Resignation of Middle School Girls Basketball Head Coach.
It is recommended the board accept the resignation of Brian Pritz as head middle school girls basketball coach and authorize the administration to post and advertise the position.
Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Fry, second?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine yes.
Resignation of Middle School Girls Basketball Head Coach.
It is recommended the board accept the resignation of Brian Pritz as head middle school girls basketball coach and authorize the administration to post and advertise the position.
Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Fry, second?
Second.
Mrs. Smith? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine yes.
School Security.
It is recommended the board approve Taylor Gephardt as school security. All clearances are on file.
Motion? So moved. Is, Mrs. Rhodes? Sorry, is this something that requires comment, please? Is he like Mr. Kiefer?
No.
No? What do you mean by school security?
He will show up at events and just be additional security for, uh...
Oh.
Security, I like.
Yeah, you mean like a...
Event security.
Event security?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct, Mr. Kiefer. It's just event security.
It's unarmed, also.
Undarmed and event security.
Didn't we have a, didn't we make the motion?
Was there a motion?
Uh, Mrs. Rhodes made the motion. We don't have a second here. Mr. Carson made the second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries, nine yes.
Citizens' comments?
I'll make a motion. Next Thursday night, we can.
or...
They're just instructions. I'm not making a motion. I'm sorry. I'm not making a motion.
Motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Benz, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.[1762.12]